Allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the flag for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for attending this evening. Susie, would you help us with the roll call vote there for attendance?
Okay. Angie Barno, present. Brandy Bastin.
Here.
Bill Nemeier.
Present.
Chris Lidle.
Here.
Clint Lefebvre.
Here.
Thank you very much. We obviously have a forum for our meeting this evening. First item on the agenda is consideration of the approval of the minutes from our meeting of May 4th, as presented in our background materials. Can we start with a motion? Is there a motion regarding the minutes?
What's your drink, Seth?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 4th, 2022 Town Council meeting.
Is there a second?
No second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions, discussion regarding the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the May 4th meeting, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is under the heading of New Agenda Items, and we'll turn the floor over to Julie Lucas with Summerfest.
Thank you for having me on such a short notice on your agenda. As I begin, I keep reminding myself that problems are in our minds and solutions in our heart. So, six weeks from now, we're going to be hosting two events for the town of New Palestine, New Palestine makes three SummerFest. And yesterday about 11 o'clock in the morning, I got a call from school that they're going to be having a major paving project going on the entire campus, and we will not be able to use our parking lot. So, they said, if you have any questions, call the corporation office. And I said, okay, who do I speak with? Dr. Landre. I had sent Dr. Landre all of our information the first year so that they knew our dates and plans. Everything appeared to be okay. I did call her, sent her a message. I said, please call me, I know your schedule's busy, and we need to discuss this paving project. So, they are going to start as soon as school is out. They hope to have it finished by the time school starts again. They're praying that it's July when it's done, but they're also going to be doing concrete work, sidewalk work, and things like that. So, we have a full schedule planned a year in advance, so six weeks leaves us very little time to redo anything or make changes. So, I made a call to Endot. I know that there's a project scheduled with sidewalks in New Palestine as well, but I don't know the status of that. Endot, I was hoping would call me back by today to let me know if we can apply for a permit for road closure on US 52. That's our next plan. So, I don't really have an answer to that question yet, so I'm kind of asking permission because I can't wait till your June 1st meeting to come back and ask for permission for a road closure. So, I'm getting the cart before the horse, maybe, but maybe it will help things just flow if I know you're okay with, yes, you guys are okay with us closing the road like we have in the past. I've talked to Chief Bealie and Jimmy, and I just don't know the status of the sidewalk project, so that's another thing we need to kind of iron out or maybe have a discussion about so that we can look at Plan Double Z and Triple A.
Well, and Jim, isn't the sidewalk project kind of put on hold?
From my understanding, yes, Steve.
It's, what are the dates for, that you tend to believe are set for Summerfest?
June 24th and 25th. It's set.
June...
We advertised, we're not on their bidding, so it's set.
25th. The last call I put in, to Endot, I talked to Luis Larquinte, I don't think the project is even letting or bidding until, I'll call him again tomorrow, he said June or July it would bid, and so that means to me it's bidding, they're going to award a contract or whatever. So, I would suspect that the curb ramps aren't even going to start until, you know, August at the very soonest.
Yeah, I had heard that there was a delay because of some measuring, this calculation or something had happened, so it was made in a delay.
Typically, there are delays, so.
Okay, so sidewalks shouldn't be a problem. You have enough other obstacles, sidewalks shouldn't be one of them.
Some of them should not be happening.
Okay, so what you need from us is to learn whether or not we would approve closing US 52 on June 24th and 25th, is that correct?
I think last, when we did it the last time, Kenny, maybe he'll help me out with this, I think we shut it down at like midnight, the 24th, so that we could get things set and then reopen it at, was it, or 23rd, and then reopen it on that Sunday.
Okay.
I have a quick question. With that being said, I guess I assume that eliminates all parking?
Yes.
So, what, what, how is everybody going to park?
Streets. Last year, we had the same issue with construction. They would not let us use parking for, for any parking stuff, but we could have vendors and our car show. So, we actually got zero complaints about parking with zero parking at the high school.
So, where were your car show meetings here, Jim?
If we shut down 52, it'd come back onto 52.
Okay, cool.
Yeah. You tried in Abbott before?
Yeah. And expand.
And went all the way down Main Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And we would probably reposition the stage just to kind of make it part of the street as well, kind of keep away as much as we can from the school side of it, just so we don't have any issues back there.
Well, and obviously, any approval that we give, it's subject to Endot's
Right.
final approval because they have jurisdiction of US 52. Okay.
Yeah, and that's, and I, like I say, I feel like I kind of get the cart before the horse, but we have a huge, two weeks ahead of us with the holiday. So, we tend to have to figure out where our movement is if we're going to not have that option, and if you don't have our, if we don't have your blessing, what we do, so.
Okay, well, is there a motion?
I'll motion to approve the closing of US 52 for Summerfest.
Well, I'll second that. Okay, any further discussion? I mean, I think we certainly all appreciate Summerfest.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, all those in favor of approving, again, it's subject to Endot's final approval, but at least the town council's approval to close US 52 within the town limits or whatever area you need from June 24th and June 25th, or midnight on the 23rd through the 25th. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, and good luck with Endot.
Thanks, that's all me visionaries.
Next item on our agenda, at our last meeting, we approved on first reading ordinance number This is an ordinance extending the corporate boundaries to approve, incorporate, and zone Willow Ridge subdivision to the R2 zoning classification. So, next on the agenda is ordinance number 050422 for second reading. Is there a motion regarding ordinance 050422?
One comment, Bill.
Yes.
I believe that we have had the updated fiscal plan, which is included in the exhibit. It was updated earlier this week. I think there was a couple typos that were fixed, by buzz, so.
Yes, I, yeah, so the motion should be to approve ordinance 050422 on second reading with incorporation of the fiscal plan that was dated February 22nd and revised May 13th to correct a couple typos. In fact, I will make the motion to approve ordinance 050422 on second reading.
On second, Seth.
It has been moved and seconded, so now it's open for discussion. Are there any questions or comments? I know the item had come before the council at numerous meetings, so I think we have a lot of information on it. Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of adopting on second reading ordinance number 050422, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Motion carries, 5-0. Next item on the agenda is under New Business, and the first item we have under this heading is the issue of the bid openings for the community crossings. Is that, is that Steve?
Yeah. This is for the 2022 Community Crossings. Our town attorney has the bid packets. He will open those and read off the contractor's name and the bid amount.
Okay, drumroll.
Could you say that again, please?
Bumgardner, 167,385, 50.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's right.
Let's get you a letter order there.
No, Steve didn't give me one. Sorry, my bad.
It's okay, he's getting paper cuts.
Next time, tell them to put it on top, Steve.
He said, tell them to put their numbers on top. We have to sort through and.
Yeah. Probably he'll.
All right, we have Robertson Paving, Inc., with a total bid amount of $163,500.
163,500 even.
That's correct, for Robertson Paving.
Want me to open this other one? That ordinance for the 050422?
Yes.
It's not in our packet, a copy of that ordinance. And I went back to May 4th, and there's not a copy in that packet either, so that needs to find, no, I need the copy attached to the agenda.
It was in your package, the meeting before that?
I need the copy on the agenda that's on the Civic website, so that if we pull up that agenda a year from now, that copy will show up on that agenda.
We'll scan it on there.
Okay.
On the website.
Yep. All right, finally, we have Globe Asphalt Paving Company, Inc., with a total bid of
No, 148.
148,309.20.
148,309.20, okay.
Okay, now, Steve, let me ask you this, because the lowest bid is not necessarily the best bid, so do you have experience working with all three of these, or do you have a recommendation as to which one we should accept?
Well, typically, what I do is I'll have to go back and, and double check all their figures for their unit prices and everything. I'll look at their financials, I'll look that their paperwork is okay through E-Verify, which is that they're okay to do Endot projects and everything, and then, once I've gone over all that, I can award the lowest responsible and responsive bidder, probably within a few days.
Because sometimes in those bids, don't they put a caveat in there about the raising price of asphalt?
I don't allow for escalation clauses.
Okay, they used to do that all the time, I know.
I don't allow for escalation clauses, and it was asked this year because of, obviously, fruit prices and everything, but when I, when I bid, we weren't in this situation, so.
Okay, so, Steve, what do you need from us? Do you need us to approve and allow you to award the bid?
Typically, that has been what has happened in the past. Endot will send, I will, you're compelled to award it to the lowest bid if they are responsible and responsive. We could do that at a council meeting. Typically, I just go ahead and award the low bid if everything looks good on their paperwork. Endot, since they've switched over to DocuSign, will send me a draft copy of the contract. Council can have a look at that. It's the same contract we've been signing the last four or five years, and then they'll send you an email and a text notification to get your signature on it.
So, do we need to do anything this evening, or do we want perhaps the next meeting after you've done that?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Or you can approve this meeting that I can award to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
You want a second on that motion?
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded to authorize Steve Poole to award the contract to the lowest responsible, responsive bid through his determination process. Is there any discussion regarding this matter? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and Steve, you are authorized to award after you've determined which one is the lowest responsible, responsive bid. Next item on the agenda is consideration of an ordinance for the use and placement of key boxes. And, go right ahead, come on up.
Good evening, I'm Will Freebryts, the Division Chief of Prevention for Sugar Creek Township Fire Department, and what we presented for you was a potential ordinance for any new businesses that come into the town to provide a key box, or better known as a knockbox, at the entrance of their building to allow us easy access into the building without doing any damage to the doors. The keys are very secured, there, we have an audit system in the fire department for the apparatus that has the keys, but the fire department is the only ones that are capable to access it. And what it does is it allows us to get into a building quicker and get into the mechanical rooms if the building is sprinkled, and we can prevent less water damage if we're able to shut the sprinkler down quicker, so. So, we have presented, do you all have a copy?
Yes, it was in our backup materials, thanks.
So, do you have any questions on that?
I do not.
Do a lot of people have it now, or?
Right now, we have 36 businesses in the township that have it.
And if we pass an ordinance, then anybody within town limits that meets the criteria would be required to do so.
Correct.
To me, it's an absolute no-brainer. I mean, it not only is a safety feature, it can minimize damage to the property, and more importantly, it allows you to get into a building or a facility faster and safer. You don't have to knock the door in.
The cost for one of these boxes is approximately $500, so it's, in the grand scheme of things, it's not really a large loan. If you had to have a locksmith come in to fix your door or fix your lock, it potentially costs more than that.
Sure, first I have to put the door back together. Okay, thank you very much, appreciate the information, and, let's see, this would be ordinance number 051822, if I'm correct. So, is there a motion regarding ordinance number 051822?
I motion to approve ordinance 051822.
I second that.
Is there any further discussion or comments regarding this matter?
Do we have to do two readings on this, or just one?
We would have to do two readings, although, you know, this is one of those that we could...
Motion.
Let's first see if we, what the vote comes, let's see how the vote comes out before we can go to any further steps. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 051822, please indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, now, because approval on first reading was unanimous, if anyone were so inclined to make a motion to waive the rules and request approval of ordinance number 051822 on second reading at this time, that would be an appropriate motion.
I'll make a motion to waive that and do the second reading right now.
I second that motion.
Okay, all those in favor of suspending the rules and adopting ordinance number 051822 on second reading at this time, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, and we will have this ordinance put into our ordinance book, and certainly think that it's a nice safety measure for us to implement.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda, under the heading of New Business, is Woodland Terrace, and they are requesting the town to sign Form CF1. Is there anyone here this evening on behalf of Woodland Terrace that could answer any questions regarding this item? I have a couple questions that I'd like to get answers to before we, you know, take any action on this item. I wasn't on the council when the tax abatement was approved, so I don't know how many years it was for, the year it started.
It was approved in 2014.
Okay.
And they never, of course, they, they wanted about three or four years to get it built before they started doing their, taking their.
Right, the abatement would apply because the assessment hadn't hit.
So, I mean, then they had a five-year abatement, and I don't know if we had, it was like 100%. I don't remember exactly what it was, but it didn't go down very much. I mean, I think even the last year was like 90%, 180%.
It's 90%. We're in the third year of it. Third year is 90, fourth year is 90, fifth year is 90, and then sixth is no abatement.
Yeah.
And we are in the third year.
So, so according to their initial abatement, I remember this, you know, you know, we don't have the paperwork in front of us, that the abatement, they had to fit those five years within 10 years. So, I mean, it looks like to me that they'll make that if they, if they do the next couple years, this is their third year.
Well, and I know that there was a year that they did not apply for the abatement. They didn't file the paperwork, didn't submit it, so they paid taxes one of those years, and I don't know, Ted, does that add a year to the back end because they failed to file the paperwork?
No, it shouldn't, mm-mm.
Okay.
I mean, it's a set time period.
No, I remember that thing distinctly said it had to be, I've got that at home someplace, but I didn't.
Well, and, and you know what, Clint? Instead of asking you to ferret through and find it, if we had a representative from Woodland Terrace, I would hope they could answer those questions, so, because...
But we have a copy of that here at town hall, I know.
Right, we do.
Okay, well, I'm kind of inclined, and I'll make a motion that we table this matter to the next meeting and that we ask somebody from Woodland Terrace to be here to answer a couple questions and take action at the next meeting.
Well, what I'm wondering is why they wait so long to bring it, because it says right here it has to be done before May 16th.
It was filed.
It was filed May 5th.
And it's filed on the 5th, so it's fine.
Can they file it without our approval or signature?
Yeah, I mean, basically, the filing just means they give, they give it to us for consideration.
Okay.
And we have a receipt date stamped on here of May 5th, so.
Well, that was filed with the auditor, not with us.
Yeah, I don't know, when we got it.
Yeah, so I don't know if they're going to miss another year or not, but I think it would be helpful if somebody were here to answer some questions, so, again, I'll, I'll make the motion to table the matter to the next meeting, and then, Jim, if somebody could reach out and have a representative come here to answer some questions, I think it would help. Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that, table it.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of tabling Woodland Terrace tax abatement form to the next meeting, please indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
And Bill, that might give us an opportunity to meet the new owners.
Yeah, I mean, it has changed ownership, and, again, it, I just think it would be very helpful if we could get the answers before, you know, we'd have a better idea of knowing what were approved, so.
So, is motion carried? Everybody say aye? Okay.
Okay, next item on the agenda is consideration of, let's see if I get a numbering correct, it would be Resolution Number 050422, BA, let's go A. And this is a resolution for the preliminary authorization to take actions regarding economic development revenue bonds and related matters for the TIF request for the apartment complex immediately south of the Wellness Center, and that is a request from the Bakovic companies. So, what this is, and everybody's received a copy of the resolution, you know, I don't know exactly what month this matter first came to us, but we've had numerous meetings, a lot of discussion, and in order to go through... and in order to go through any TIF process, there has to be a gauge, just a determination of whether there's any interest in moving forward or not. So this is a preliminary authorization, and as stated in Resolution zero-five-zero-four-two-two-A, alls this does is allow this matter to proceed to the redevelopment commission, the economic development commission. You know, there's an awful lot of work from this point forward, and, you know, as I understand it, you know, at the last meeting, you know, representatives of the Bakovic company said that they basically need to know, is it a yes or a no? Are we moving forward or not? So that is what the purpose of Resolution zero-five-zero-four-two-two-A is. And this is a resolution that I spoke with the council who would serve as bond council on behalf of the town, and that's Brian Bosma. And, you know, he indicated that this was the first step in the process, and he laid out a timeframe, timeline of all of the steps, and I just received that. So let's first see if there's any interest in moving forward. So that's the explanation of the resolution.
I mean, I know for myself, I'm interested in moving forward, but I've been away a little bit lately, so I'm trying to understand the full magnitude of what this, I'll...
Well, how about this, let's get a motion, and that way, then it's open for discussion, so...
Can he get his question answered first before that?
Well, I mean, yeah, if you'd like, although procedurally, we get a motion, we second it, and then it's open for discussion.
Ted?
Yeah, generally, discussion takes place after there's a question on the table, so...
Although, I mean, is that a requirement, or, I mean, because certainly we can discuss it before a motion's made.
I'd like to get a little more information.
Sure, and we're not gonna take a vote without a lot more information, so, but, okay.
You're free to answer his question if you'd like.
Absolutely.
I mean, so just what I've, from in the past when we've had, you know, discussions with this group, it sounds like of all the different kind of apartments, we've seen this as being the one that we actually would like. I mean, it seems to me, check all the boxes. So as far as that part, I'm in favor of that, I'm just wanting to know about what we have now.
Sure, and, you know, and we have, Mr. Bakovic is here and other representatives, so if there's anybody that, you know, and I did make the statement at the last meeting because Mr. Wagner asked me point-blank, I think he wanted to know whether he's wasting his time to come back to the meeting, you know, would there be the opportunity for discussion before we vote? Or would we follow our agenda in that public comment isn't until after all business is concluded? And, you know, even though that's the way our agenda is written, you know, when we have something like this that is of importance and that there is public interest, it's, in my opinion, that's exactly the time that you kind of go a little bit out of order and let anybody and everybody who's here, you know, say anything that they'd like to say. We've had a lot of discussions on this matter, but, you know, like Chris said, you know, he wasn't here at every one of those meetings, and, you know, so I'm all in favor of hearing everything that anybody has to say on the matter. And Chris, so that if I can try to explain, this is my summation of the information that was presented at the last meeting, and then at one of the meetings Buzz made a presentation about TIF and the whole process. Might have been a little bit more technical than everybody needed, but it's what the process is. So my understanding is that, you know, initially, the Covid companies came to us, you know, we went to their property, a couple of us toured it, and it is absolutely a top-notch, high-quality apartment complex, and that's what they're proposing. So, you know, we liked it, they came in, made presentations, they gave us, you know, the elevations of what different buildings would look like, a site plan showing where the different buildings and what types of structures would be located on the property. And then they started lining up their financing. It's my understanding that this will have, it'll be a sixty-one million dollar investment. And in order to finance that, they reached out to their lenders, and the lenders, they make loans on a commercial property based on the revenue that's gonna be generated from the project. Well, to get sixty-one million dollars worth of financing, the lenders require a little bit extra revenue stream, and that's where the TIF bond financing comes into play. So what is requested, and at some point Buzz, I'll let you give, maybe if there's more technical explanation, but again, as I understand it, they're asking the town to issue a five-million-dollar bond that over the life of the bond, that can go up to twenty to twenty-five years at the absolute maximum. The property would be built, it would be assessed, and I think Buzz made calculations based on like about a thirty to forty million dollar appraised value. And the way the TIF works is whatever taxes would be paid on the thirty to forty million dollar assessed value, which won't happen until probably three years from now, because it'll take a year or two to construct, then you're always a year behind in assessment, and there may be, you know, a couple of different phases. So until you get up to the full, you know, thirty to forty million... Oh, I'm sorry.
I understand how the TIF works, I'm just asking about the question.
Cut me off.
Yeah, yeah. So I know the final numbers or anything are...
It's five millions what they're asking, and then, so what the proposal is, when the hospital came in and did their TIF, you know, it was the first TIF that the town had ever done. The agreement was that the redevelopment commission would get fifty thousand dollars a year, and we haven't received that yet. I think next year will probably be the first year that that's actually paid. It's either next year or the year after. This particular bond proposal is the developer will get seventy-five percent, and the town, through the redevelopment commission, will get twenty-five percent. Buzz's number put that at about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. So three years, four years from now, there would be sev-, because again, they pay the taxes, instead of paying it into the county, they are able to keep seventy-five percent, the town gets twenty-five percent. And again, their statute rules on what can be done with that twenty-five percent. So, and then that's over the life of the bond issued, until it's retired. Let me know any other, and then we'll see if I'm even close to my...
I just didn't have all the numbers there.
Yep.
I've been familiar with the TIF concept.
I sure wasn't.
Just one clarification, they actually do pay it to the county.
And then it's paid back?
Incremental, the incremental tax revenue is what's captured by the RDC. And we would collect all that, but they pay seventy-five percent back.
So Buzz, right now, do you have, is it one percent, two percent, the cap that applies to? I know in apartments, it's two percent. And my understanding is whatever the taxes are on the land right now, that have been the taxes on the land for the last twenty years as adjusted, whatever those taxes are, that amount still gets paid to the county. So there's no loss, but the other taxing authorities don't receive a portion of the increased assessment until the bond is retired. And again, that's just Buzz or anyone else, let me know if that's my understanding of how it works.
And Bill, what is the number after the bond retires?
You mean the...
It's about six hundred twenty thousand dollars is the gross tax increment that's anticipated.
Six, six, okay.
Assume thirty-one million is our incremental assessed value.
Okay.
That's at the two percent cap.
Right, and because this is apartments, not housing. Traditional housing, there's a one percent cap, a one percent tax rate. This is two, and a commercial or industrial is at three percent.
Okay.
So what is agriculture? Is, okay, I didn't know what farmland was taxed at. So again, that's my understanding.
I'm like you, I'd like to hear what the things that have to say.
Sure, so at this time, again, going a little bit out of order, but, you know, keeping with what I said we do at the last meeting, I'm gonna open the floor, and if there's anybody in the audience that has any comments that they'd like to share, please come on up to the podium, give us your name, share with us whatever you'd like, and we appreciate any additional input. Okay, seeing none. I'm totally kidding. So close.
So mine is, Chris, one of my thirty-nine eleven South Street, Brooklyn. My understanding from the last discussion that is they're asking for fifty percent or seventy-five percent of the TIF?
Seventy-five.
Taxable seventy-five.
Which is unlike the hospital, it was just an agreed fifty thousand a year, which might equate to nine or ten percent.
Okay, so developer got approval in fall of two thousand twenty-one, this last fall, without this, without asking for this. So now they want, now I've heard that, I've heard eight million out there as well as the five million.
There is no eight million, not that, not involved in what we're doing.
Oh, wait a minute, no, I wouldn't say that.
Okay.
I wouldn't make that statement.
I just did.
Okay.
I don't, I, I mean, they're asking for five mil...
Originally, it would be eight million was discussed, but five million is where the ask is right now.
So it would stop at five million? There's no interest involved there or anything?
Well, there is interest.
Well, that adds money to it, Buzz.
Right, so I don't know if it was, it was two meetings ago, so a month ago, I'm understanding that it was, the ask was eight million over circa the town.
It was always at five.
I don't remember eight ever being discussed.
Well, you see, I know you're one...
Well, that, yeah, that may include all the interest.
Yeah, would there be that much interest? I mean, and I don't know, I'm just asking.
Yeah, there's a four, five and a quarter percent interest, the taxable interest rate. It comes to... It's about, the net amount's about seven point eight million. Part of the sizing of the five million includes three and a half years of capitalized interest. And so that amounts to about nine hundred thousand. And so I deduct, if you deduct, it's on, it was on the payment schedule that was handed out. But that nine hundred thousand of capitalized interest is already factored into the five million on the bond size. So the net principal and interest coming from the actual TIF, about seven, just under seven point eight million.
And that's, that's over how many years?
It's over twenty-one and a half years with eighteen years of principal and interest retirement. We assume that we're already two or three, these three years into the life of the existing TIF area. And it'll take about three and a half years before...
Construction and assessment.
So the actual amortization is over eighteen years.
Okay.
So like you get, I guess, roll it down grader than it, like you get a loan on your house, you get a principal of five million, with all the principal interest you're gonna pay over the course of the loan, it's eight million or seven point eight.
Or, or more, on a mortgage.
Yeah, with rents.
Yeah.
Okay, so that feeds into my concern, and you all, everybody here knows my concern about Little Ridge and overall market conditions. I have a statement that I read from the planning commission, I'm not gonna reread it, from January nineteenth, where I said that the average rate on the pipe of thirty-year mortgage hit three point seven Tuesday, according to Mortgage News Daily. What was it today? It's five point five. So just four months later, it's five point five. So clearly, the developer's asking for this because the market conditions have changed, or at least that appears to be the situation. The Fed has heightened mortgage rates at a thirteen-year-high climbing. These are home mortgages, they're real estate commercials, not the same, but it does track, generally speaking. If the market tanks or in a credit bubble, or they become asking for the rest of it, they're asking for all. And that's something I think we need to think about as well. So the TIF, again, think about what the intent of the TIF is. It's not to finance developers' problems.
And Chris, can I try to get an answer to that? So Buzz, what happens?
If the increment doesn't come in as high as anticipated and the agreement with the developer and the town still specifies that seventy-five, twenty-five, they're limited to what they get paid back based on whenever that seventy-five percent of the increment turns out to be.
So, and, is there, what's the exposure to the town?
There's no exposure to, it would not be a tax-backed bond by the town.
So we wouldn't have to pay it under any scenario?
It would mostly be on their end if the increment doesn't materialize, they just can't be able to get the money back.
Okay.
So it doesn't harm us?
No, you would have to agree to do a property tax back, which that's never been, you know...
And that's not contemplated?
There's no, there's no risk to the town that the taxpayers would ever have to kick in anything to make these bond payments.
Okay, and I'm sorry, Chris, I just wanted, as you bring up a very valid point, it's worth, and I don't know the answer, so if Buzz can help us, then we'll get the answer.
Yeah, just as, I'm not a little state attorney, just as a community member, it just seems, hey, we all thought we had a deal last fall, now, now they're coming asking for seventy-five percent. Seventy-five percent of the TIF, not even twenty-five percent of it, they're asking for seventy-five. That seems like pretty, pretty strong bill, okay? I'm recommending to you guys not to accept this.
The hospital got ninety-two percent.
Well, it's the hospital, so, I mean, again.
But that was, that was the deal we made with the hospital.
Right.
So...
Yeah, they did come back and ask for more.
Nope.
So, those are, those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wagner?
Deal Wagner, four-four-six-two, South six-three West. So the first thing I did in researching this TIF was, obviously, I was curious how the hospital was doing. So I went out on the gateway and looked it up, and while the report states in here from Buzz that we get that fifty thousand dollars a year you mentioned,
We haven't yet.
In two thousand twenty-one, we got thirty-three dollars and seventy cents. So then I printed out more documents, so the economic development plan was passed in two thousand nineteen, December two thousand nineteen. So there was a report due in two thousand twenty, which doesn't state any parcels or any dollars or anything in it. So then the next year in two thousand twenty-one, the report finally has some dollars in it, but down here, it lists three parcel numbers. None of these parcel numbers except one, which is... None of these parcel numbers except one, which is actually exempt, um, and that would be the large pond next to six hundred, um, is listed on here. These other two parcel numbers, I can't even find in the GIS, so, um, and they don't match the other lot numbers that are there, so, I, I look at these documents and, and, you know, it's kind of like, what is this really? It also lists the incremental assessed value, which is really what we're concerned about. You mentioned, Bill, the, um, current value of the land versus the improvements, what value that brings. So, when you look at this, the numbers across here, whether it's the gross assessed value, the net assessed value, or the base value, they're all the same. So, it's hard to even look at these reports and know what the impact of what's going on over there, and what are we really looking at? So, um, maybe somebody, and, and I appreciate your resolution, because I thought we were coming in here tonight to approve this or disapprove this, um, so I'm glad this has gone a, a different direction. So, that was some of my concerns with the gateway. Also, there's a letter, I'm sure you all received the letter from Dr. Landtrip, um, about the, uh, TIF, which she is definitely, definitely not for, um-
What letter?
Yeah.
We didn't receive the letter.
Haven't received the letter?
No.
No, in fact, I personally spoke with Dr. Landtrip, and she indicated that you asked her to be here tonight, and she said she wouldn't be here tonight, and she wouldn't be here to oppose it.
Can we get a copy of the letter? Would you mind? Okay.
So, I mean, that's, I can only say what my conversation with her was.
I had a conversation with Bobby Oder, and he, he wasn't on board.
He was not on board?
He was not on board. So, if there are other options that we could, if we can announce.
Ross wasn't in the paper too, that you could announce. Just, I'm not sure he was against that.
Yeah, she stated in an article in the paper, in a past article, that she was against it.
Did, did she say why she was against it?
Um, she goes through a lot of things about the impact of it on the schools and, and their operating budget and, and that sort of thing. She, she seemed to be more positive about, um, tax abatements as a, as a vehicle for development as opposed to TIFs.
That's what Bobby Oder said too.
Yeah, and the only problem is, the abatement doesn't show a revenue stream for the developer to get their financing. So, I mean, they're, they're definitely different vehicles, but they also serve different purposes. So, if you have a developer that's paying for a development a hundred percent out of pocket, an abatement serves them equally well. But the TIF shows a revenue stream for purposes of financing, so. Okay, now, is, is there anyone else here?
More, more.
Oh, yeah, go right ahead.
The things you can use the TIF money are pretty specific, um, and, and part of, and, and I remind the three of you that were here last meeting, um, when Rex Spivey was talking about, you know, it's kind of like, does this generate jobs? What, you know, is it poorly good of the people? Yes, there's nice apartments, and some people need apartments, but what about the townspeople, what's it good for for the townspeople? Are we, are we generating jobs with this development? Um, you know, TIF money is usually for infrastructure, um, the roads are already in that complex, so the roads going into the apartments are part of the development, not part of the town's expenses. So, those are all things that I hope you'll be looking at as it goes through these other committees.
Thank you, but, and, and I will point out, in the second, whereas paragraph in the resolution, a- and this is a resolution, uh, not an ordinance, I think earlier I might have incorrectly referred to it as an ordinance, it's resolution. And in the second, whereas, Mr. Bosma has cited the purpose of TIF financing, and the purpose of TIF financing is to finance the cost of acquisition, construction, renovation, installation, and equipment of economic development facilities in order to foster diversification of economic development and a creation or retention of opportunities for gainful employment in or near the town. So, it, it doesn't even have to say that this is a project that's going to generate jobs, which I think was Mr. Spivey's concern at the last meeting. Instead, you know, does housing foster employment? I believe that it does, and I know that there are a lot of, you know, the warehouses going up north, there's a lot of activity, people need to live somewhere. So, and in my conversations with Brian Bosma, he's indicated that an apartment complex absolutely fits within the statutory definition for TIF financing, so.
I mean, the way I envisioned it, you put those apartments, that does, you're gonna have to have more restaurants, shops, businesses right around, that, that was gonna help, that's, that was my thought, am I, is anybody not seeing that that was what would happen there, and it would bring in more on the, I mean, that's kind of the way I envisioned what we're trying to do here, am I wrong?
Well, I can tell you, and I am a real estate attorney, and I work for a real estate developer, and a perfect example, it has now been announced that the Taco Bell is going to go right at the corner next to the Fifth Third Bank. So, that, that's already a public announcement. Within seven days of that announcement being public, we've had ten inquiries on the two lots immediately to the north of it. Activity breeds activity. So, you know, you have to look at the town, and also, you know, I know we're going through the process to update the comprehensive plan, it's about six years old, you know, we're making those decisions one at a time, you know, where is it that you want additional living? Do you want multifamily living even to be a possibility? Apartments, um, it hasn't come yet, but there probably will be a request at some point in time, somebody's gonna come to us and say, it's great that you have three hundred thousand dollar houses, five hundred thousand dollar houses, apartments that cost eleven hundred dollars a month, but what about some government subsidized, low income, section eight, whatever it may be currently? That request will come. It, it's not if, it's when. And we have to decide, number one, is that what we want? And then, just as important, where do we want it if we want it? So, you know, I get to me, and, and I met with, help me, Jim, two first names, Rob, George, with the hospital.
Oh, Rob Matt.
Thank you, Rob Matt. And I apologize to Rob that I just got his name wrong, but, he said that, you know, they had been approached by several developers that wanted to build immediately south of the wellness center, and they said no-
Yeah.
-because the quality was not, they don't want that next to there.
Yeah, we want the nice, uh, uh, form, that's what I liked about it.
When the, the COVID company, and, and help, am I pronouncing it even? Okay, because, and again, I, I'm terrible with names, ask my wife. So, y- you know, is this what we want, and is this where we want it? And, you know, being at the intersection that this is located, in my opinion, this is the perfect location. It causes the least disruption with infrastructure and the rest of the town, and, you know, you will see a lot more activity, not just in that general area, but throughout the town, activity breeds activity. And we said no to every one of those additional inquiries.
Yeah.
That's not what we want, yeah.
What additional inquiries?
Next to Taco Bell. Just 'cause you get interest doesn't mean it's something you wanna do.
Interest, they ask interest from the town or ask interest from FAR?
No, from FAR, I'm just saying, from my experience, activity promotes more activity. Julie?
Bring my mainstream hat on here, I have a real small fish in this big fish fry, but we're working on a grant with the American Rescue Plan, and one of the hopes and dreams that we have is working with the town, seeing the town center pictures is something I really think is the vision we all need to look at. That would benefit the town, the community members, we could have employment, we could have an event center, it would be a lot more, or everybody's bang as a buck.
Ted? Can the redevelopment commission use proceeds from a TIF for the promotion of a town center?
I don't see why not.
Okay, so, I mean-
They've got, they've got almost plenary unit power, the RDC, I mean, they can, they can make gifts and credits and enter into all kinds of arrangements.
Right, so whether it was purchasing land, building the first building of the town center, because, you know, I have heard from multiple people that town hall being in a bank, um, it might be nice if town hall was actually located in a building that was designed for a town hall. I mean, so, it's, this is a way that could possibly finance some of that, or contribute towards it, so.
I have questions.
Yes.
So, our comprehensive plan is six years old.
Yes.
And we keep annexing in properties, we're talking about TIFs to apartment complexes based off of a six-year-old comprehensive plan. The reason why we have these comprehensive plans is to plan it. We're putting a lot of things before that, I mean, it would be better if we had a comprehensive plan that we were basing all of this off of, and a step process to this. One, that's one. I'm gonna keep going, good, hang on.
Okay.
So, I read a letter from Dale, from Lisa Landtrip, so, you had a conversation with Lisa Landtrip, and Lisa Landtrip said she was on board in your conversation, and then we get this letter from Dale that says that she's not on board.
And the letter that Dale handed out is dated January nineteenth, my conversation was four days ago.
My conversation with Bobby Oder was about two months ago, and he pretty much said the same thing that was in that letter. So, have you talked with Lisa Dale recently?
I emailed her, I felt like this was coming up to me.
And she sent you this? In the recent email?
Yes.
Can you forward that to me? And then, my other issue is, the council was invited back in January to go tour the apartments up by St. Vincent, which you, Jim and I went to go see. And then, we came back, they came and talked to us, we had a meeting about it, said how nice they were, there was a discussion on how many units there was gonna be, and then, at least on my end of it, that's the last I've heard, I've not been informed, invited, given information within these other meetings that have taken place, and I think that that's something that should have been shared across all five council members, and I've not seen anything like that. So, in order for me to either vote for or against the TIF, I need to have all that information in front of me, and I don't wanna hear about these backdoor things or things that were promised, I wanted the information, all of it, in front of me so I can make an informed decision, and I don't feel like I have all that yet.
And what I shared is what I have, in that the developer has said, they, it's not, they've talked about it for months and months.
Right.
Is the town in favor or not? Basically, it's, we need to know whether this is moving forward or we'd go somewhere else, so, I mean, and that's not an argument.
Well, I mean, all the council members were on board, and we're giving all the information and make that decision, then we, we wouldn't be going back and forth, but, I mean, bits and pieces.
Well, and, and keep in mind, this, tonight's resolution, it, it sets in place moving forward, that's it. This is not-
This isn't the final vote?
Absolutely, not even close to it. In fact, let me share something that I received today. This is the timeline that, you know, if, if we take a vote on this resolution and it's not approved, you can throw this away.
Came from KTR, this is from our attorney's office?
Yes, I got this from, um, Brian Bosma, and it's a timeline that sets forth, starting today, if this preliminary, and it is preliminary, resolution is approved, there's a weekly timeframe of what has to happen between now and October twenty-fourth. And obviously, you miss one deadline, you add a week to everything, but, the earliest, if everything was met without any delays, is October twenty-fourth. So, this is not final, they just need to know, do we even wanna move forward? And as I read this resolution, again, that was prepared by Brian Bosma, it's simply an indication that either yes, we're in favor, or no, we're not in favor of even considering the project moving forward. That's all that we're being asked, this evening.
Now, I, 'cause I seriously don't remember, 'cause we've done so much stuff as of late, was, is that a council vote or the bondsman, or is that just the council president, or did we, did we do that, and I just don't remember it?
It's just, there has been no determination, other than I will tell you this, I will not let the hospital pick the bond counsel. I won't let the developer pick the bond counsel, so that means the town council picks the town council, or, the bond counsel, because who do we want representing us?
Because I know that when we did the hospital, they used, I think, Boz McKinney, and that bill was absolutely ridiculous, so it was across the board that, that, we were not gonna use that again, but-
Well, I have other reasons for not using that particular law firm, and I'll-
Yeah, I think Ted, when you, uh, interviewed for this job, you, you, uh, talked about the bond counsel, and maybe we paid my, a little bit too much for that.
Yeah, I think it was actually Barnes, wasn't it?
Yeah, I remember that very clearly.
I think it was about a hundred and five thousand, um, a bond to me, or more, I mean, bond counsel are never cheap, you're not, there, there's only a few people who do it, honestly, um, in the city, uh, probably five firms do it, and we happen to be one of them, and I can tell you, we are always cheaper than all the other guys.
And because you had asked that, Clint, you know, when we hired Ted, there was, you know, it, it's not a one-man shop, or a five-man shop, who's going to send an associate that's gonna get us into a lawsuit, like our prior attorney. You know, we have litigation expertise, so that when we were sued over the event center, we didn't shop who was going to represent us, we knew who we were. So, to me, this isn't even up for debate or question, when Ted's firm is the lowest charging bond counsel in town, I don't need to hear what Ice Miller's gonna charge, or Baker and Daniels, or Barnes and Thornburg, and I have zero interest in any one of them taking me to lunch, or any other reason to, to try to influence who we use.
I just, I, you keep dropping the bondsman's name, and you presented this, and I just didn't know when we approved that, that was my question.
We, we haven't approved it.
Okay, but we have this whole thing laid out?
And this, and we're not even approving this timeframe, he went through the statute and said, these are the steps.
That's right, we haven't been engaged as bond counsel.
Nope. But I know who I won't allow be bond counsel. So, um, is there anyone else in the audience that has anything that they would like to share? So, is there anyone else in the audience that has anything that they would like to share?
Kate Miller's gonna find that on drive, New Pauls, Indiana. I don't like to get up and talk about, speak in front of the people because I'm not comfortable doing it because of you and that same simple song. But, we moved here a little over sixty years ago, and nobody likes to hear about the old days, I understand that. Walked up to him, oh, I used to go all the way.
In the snow.
But, town was about six hundred people. We had everything we needed, grocery store, drugstore, hardware, gas stations. In the eighties, we got a sewer. And I'll start off by saying, I'm not anti-development. I'm not, I'm not for it, I'm not against it. Because it's gonna happen. I grew up on the east side of Indianapolis when it was farmland. Someday that we houses will tear the fountain down, okay, so, forget that. But, the town pretty much stayed the same until we got sewers. And after that came, there was a few developments out around. And the people that lived here all their lives were upset with how we did it or what was coming out here from Indianapolis. And when we got sewers, the developers started coming, 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 because now we have but three houses per acre instead of one. You don't blame them for that, I mean, they're business, they're business. The thing that bothers me is that Harding Barbs, Russell Heights, Cypress Creek, all of them. I'm not against them, don't get me wrong, I'm not, because I live in the old part of town. Every development that has ever come to this town, their, their attitude is, oh, we're gonna do this, this is wonderful for your town. Look what we're doing for your town. We didn't need them. We were doing fine with that, and they needed us. But they always presented like, what, oh, we're gonna do for the town, this is wonderful. Oh, look at all this, all that kind of thing. I kinda liked it, when the builders landed and told the Indians, how much better than they were. Go ask the Indians how we do about that. Anyway, they, they was on that road. But back when, in the first developments, we kind of, we didn't get all excited about the growth and this and that there. We had, we had to deal with it and took it. It seems like now, though, we want to get bigger, we want to get bigger. We got all this money coming in, and we gotta get this territory before couple of those. And we gotta get it before Greenfield does and all this kind of stuff. Because we're afraid what might happen if we don't do it. And maybe that's not all bad, but sometimes we tend to give away. We get going to quality, or quantity instead of quality or something like that. And I sit and listen to all this stuff and all the numbers they talk about don't mean nothing to me because I pretty much spoke math in high school. So, you can talk about the numbers and what we're gonna get, what we ain't gonna get, what this, what that. The thing, and I never, I don't like to get up and talk about stuff, but the thing that upsets me about this project is, I sit and listen to all the meetings, to planning commissions and all that. What a wonderful company this is, and all the things that they did. And it's all of this was such a good fit and all that. And like I said before, the town doesn't really need this, they need the town. They come in and they present all of this stuff, and it's a great company, and I don't question what they're armed in this and that. They did it all approved. Then they come back and say, oh, by the way, we need the money. We don't have the money to do it, we need your help to get the financing. Well, I say, you know, when we bought a house in town, we didn't ask the town for help. We bought a business in town, we didn't ask the town for help to buy the business or buy a car or anything else. So, why should we help them? That's my opinion. If you, if the company isn't financially sound enough to do it on their own, forget it, find somebody to come down the road. Because we don't need those apartments, they need us.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, again, we, we've talked about this. Jim, Chris wasn't here. You went to a conference with other town managers, and one of the topics was TIF financing.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, tell us just a little bit about that.
Well, a lot of the municipalities, Plainfield being one of them, I think the largest, I think we had, I had that conversation. They have one of the biggest TIF districts, and their, their surplus of extra money. And I, I get it, you know, but we talked about, you know, houses that we've come in here. The impact, Buzz, correct me, I'm gonna do some buzz math here. I think I calculated, it would take a hundred acres, two hundred homes, three hundred thousand, three hundred thousand dollar homes to accommodate what this footprint's gonna take, you know, to that assessed value. You know, that's, that's another hundred acres we're taking out of this county or this area. That's another two hundred homes, that's a big impact, you know, versus the small impact of the apartments. This is a tool, that's like Julie said, you know, we owe it, to me, I think we owe it to the community. We, we're gonna continue to build houses like they plant corn out here. But this community has zero for the community. I mean, you look at the town centers, you look at parks, what do we have? I'll tell you, my wife and I, we go out to dinner. You know where we went? We went all the way out to Centerville. We go all the way to Shelbyville to eat dinner. That's just my wife and myself, you know. So, how many, how many dollars are we taking out of this community that we could bring back into this community? It, it takes a little project like this to bring some of this cash in, to stimulate new business every day. I mean, yep, McCordville's grown, I think, what did we kind of calculate with our wastewater? The population increase, maybe in the next, do you remember, I tried to call Megan?
Yeah, it was significant.
It's very significant, and...
Yeah, if you take McCordville as a model...
Yeah.
That we anticipate to see on the south side, you know, McCordville is a very similar population size to this, six, seven, eight, nine years ago. And now they're up over ten, twelve thousand.
Yeah, then we built Stanford.
Yeah.
We don't want that to happen.
Yeah, so, it, it might take on it, yeah, I, I would like to see a TIF with more jobs, you know, versus this. But at the end of the day, you know, what we're gonna gain off this in the long run, I think it's beneficial. We created this TIF, we have eighteen dollars in it right now. You know, what are we gonna do with it? I think it costs us that much to look up records, you know, for constituent. But we have to use this tool, I think we have to be mindful how we're gonna use it. But I, me, I think it's a, this is gonna be a great tool to use. I think this is a great project. I, I understand exactly, my sentiments are with Jake, you know. But, you know, old school, I, I'm very protective of that myself. I, I deal with that with my wife, she comes from a farm, farm field here. And we have this conversation daily about growth, you know. I mean, they do not want their farm to be integrated with housing in this. But like he said, it, it will be, you know. Do not tell my father and all that, Jake. But it, just a matter of time, you know, you can't stop growth, we can only plan for it.
And, sort of to your point, you're right, now we've had people come to us and ask us about putting houses. We've had people come to us already and ask us to put houses in and saying, we have to change it around because we want to make money, like you're saying, and put three houses per acre. And like we said, we didn't come to you, you're coming to us. We're not changing the way we want to do this type of thing. I'm not willing to do that for that specific thing. But I mean, I, I believe these are the kind of apartments, in my opinion, what I've seen that would actually be beneficial to me. So, I kinda, this is a different situation that those houses, I'm not willing to bend on. But I mean, this, I'm definitely willing to look into this more than what we're going...
My, my point is not, I'm not against the apartments. I mean, apartments, houses, we're gonna get that.
Yes, sir.
And I understand it's, it's your job to control and try to get the best development, and I think we have, that's where everybody wants to move out here.
Exactly.
There's no arguments with all that. My argument is who's paying for it? I said, you know, going back again, when we put sewers in this town, all right, the town took on the debt, the residents and the businesses of the town took on the debt. We didn't have nobody to bail us out. We paid a sewer bill one year during construction, we didn't have sewers. We had to pay a sewer bill in order to pay back the loan that we were getting to build the sewer. And then when we get done with that, we had to pay a hookup fee. And then the people that lived here had to tear out seventy tanks, tear down outhouses, and go to a lot of expense to hook up the sewer. And nobody bailed us out on that. So, I'm not complaining about the development, the apartments or whatever. Everybody's done a good job as far as what we've got. It's just that why should, why should we give up tax money to pay rent for the people in the apartments? Because if they have to have that money for cash flow, if I understand a little bit of this, our tax money's going to pay the rent in those apartments.
Is that a correct assessment?
Why should we do that? That's the part I don't understand. I don't mind the development, the people coming out here, who came out here. I mean, you know, I'm not a white wall resident. But I don't think we should pay the way for other people to come in there, that's my complaint.
Is that a correct assessment?
What I have seen is night and day different. That with the TIF financing, the quality that can be constructed is absolutely top-notch. It's A-plus. Without that financing, and with the developer doing it a hundred percent, again, without financing, funding it themselves, what you get is a C-minus to a D. And, and quite honestly, those are the types of projects that the hospital has rejected. And that's what they're getting. And to get something much better, that's the need for this request. And again, that's just as I understand.
I would just have one other question to the, to the developer. If they, if you deny the TIF and they don't get the money, and they, and they're saying, is, is this, is there no way, do they have any other way to finance it one hundred percent?
Well, and I want...
Is this the only way they can do it, period, in this story?
There's representatives from the developer, I mean, I'm not gonna answer that question.
I can't answer that question.
Based on the information that we have, you know, what we have to be part of, the regional lift station, all these added costs, because obviously, cost has gone through the road. It makes the project not feasible without coming and getting a TIF. I, I'm just like you, from the old farms of Chicago, all of a sudden, Rockford, when we had developers come in and ask for tips, I was all against it because I thought we're asking, they're asking for me to subsidize them. It's not that case. That's why we talked to Buzz and we, and we wanted to get a fair understanding of how this process works. It's money that we wouldn't have coming regardless. But a lot of the stuff that we're doing with infrastructure is that, is coming to the city, not just down for our project. The regional lift station, we, we brought Tim Russell from mine agent. It's gonna be over a million dollars, something that we didn't have in our project, even bigger because we thought the system was there. So, there's a lot of things to it, and also the standards that the hospital wants us to make is well above what many construction people would want, types of development. Because three, four-sides and breaks, those are stuff that don't benefit an apartment developer. But we can retain everything in our, in our family. So, when we build, we build for the my generation for the next fifty, sixty years. I mean, people have concerns and I just tell you, based on what we do and how we do this, that's why we're asking for this in my, in my...
Thank you. Well, and, you know, to the extent we're going to have rental properties, me personally, I would prefer that they be in a rental community that is labeled as such, approved as such, built as such. Everybody knows what you're getting. As opposed to developers who come in, build subdivisions, and then sell their houses to these national rental businesses. And what they are, they're single-family apartments and individual dwellings. And they get run into the ground almost immediately. It's just, that's not what I want. So, again, I know we went completely out of order, but I think for the public good, it's best that we had this input, not after we made a vote, certainly before, because, you know, everything that has been said is being considered. And me personally, having heard all of it, what it does for the town, what it does for, on its own, the quality, but then, what it's going to generate in additional activity. And I'm not looking to give away the town, but I also am very mindful, it's coming. And right now, we get to pick and choose what's coming. This is one that I would pick to choose, to say yes to, but that's just...
The answer to your question that you asked, the answer to the question that you asked in regards to the TIF and if they didn't get the TIF?
I'm sorry, I don't hear it real well.
You asked about the TIF, and if they didn't get the TIF for them to build. We received an email that said they were asking for the five million TIF. And if it wasn't approved for the five million TIF, that they wouldn't be able to build, so...
And Angie, I want to go back to your question about the comprehensive plan. It is currently six years old, but everything, including Willow Ridge, the Wellness Center, anything that's been approved has been consistent with the comprehensive plan. And Jim, am I correct, or is there anything that had to be modified in the comprehensive plan?
The comprehensive plan, really, it, it touched all the way up to six hundred. The only thing the comprehensive plan, you know, we're struggling with is, you know, we went from forty-five homes a year to two hundred and sixteen, you know. And that's gonna continue right now, so...
Well, and so, as we update the comprehensive plan, I think, you know, we need to determine, do we want developers to go to the county, develop property under county standards that don't equate to our own? And then after the project is built, and, you know, I don't want to drop any developers' names, but I think Clint has some firsthand experience where a developer goes to the county, says whatever they want. Nobody checks. They built something that's completely inconsistent with what they represented they were gonna build. And as the town, we get stuck with it. And it's a project we would not have approved if they came in and said, this is what we want to build. So, with this project being in-town limits, we know what we're getting, and we have to determine if that's what we want. And, you know, I'm not in favor of annexing just for annexing's sake. But if you do an annexation, and then that gives you a voice at the table of what can and can't be developed. And this has nothing to do with the apartment complex, but we have developers that want to build and have a garage door eighteen feet from the roadway. How in the world do you park three cars in an eighteen-foot driveway? So, now you're putting cars on both sides of a narrow street, how do you get a fire truck through there? You can't, that's exactly it. And you know what the developer says to us? Well, if, if, if we've got to go more than eighteen foot, we're not coming. And we said, fine, we don't want you. So, again, it's part of us picking and choosing and, and having the luxury to do so. And, and when somebody says, you know, if it's not the quality that you want, if it's take it or leave it, I'm all for leaving it. And to the extent, if this becomes a, this is the quality apartment complex you can get with a TIF project, it's absolutely beautiful, I would live there in a heartbeat. I'm not selling either of my houses to move there, but, but you'd be proud to live there.
Well, Bill, I'll share, you know, I mean, this is a, you know, continued problem. But, you know, right now, I, I spoke that we have some property in town, just outside of town here. It's still in our corporate limits, but it's that rental home company out of California, you know. So, we will be facing another issue at hand, I think that's gonna be, you know, we're gonna feel this, you know, so, it's just very possible here with the next company. And we've talked to them twice, so...
Yeah, so again, we have to decide, do you want a rent-to-own community? Yeah. So again, we have to decide, do you want a rent-to-own community, um, so?
Bill, I'd like to make a comment.
Sure, go right ahead.
I just, just a matter of style here. Bill, it seems like you, because, probably because you're a real estate attorney, you have a lot of confidence in this. I feel like you kind of dominated the conversation. And Chris said some things, and Angela was arguing with you a little bit. I think that's good. I think it's healthy. Have some argument or a little bit of drama.
We don't want-
I guess I'd like to see a little more of it. So, Randy, I haven't heard from you tonight.
I have to abstain from this discussion because the property is owned by my employer, as I stated at the last meeting. Yes. Because anything could be perceived as influential or opinion.
Who owns that land? Does the apartment people own that land?
No, the hospital owns it.
But one other thing, though, it's, Bill, I think, are we just having a discussion about moving forward?
That, this is a preliminary resolution. And Chris, would you like a copy of the timetable?
Yes.
Please.
Okay, that's-
Okay, yeah, I mean, and this, again, Brian Bosma prepared that, that said, if we go through this evening with a preliminary approval, and that's all it is, do we want to move forward or not? It's either dead or moving forward. Here's the timeline, and the soonest it can be done is October twenty-fourth. So this is not the be-all, end-all, one meeting, vote, and that's it. Not at all.
It seems like, it seems like you're already on board with it. So I guess as a matter of style, maybe I feel like-
I am.
Giving away your cards too much here, but-
I, I don't mind, I mean, we're sharing our opinions, and as much as you're against it, I'm for it.
I've dealt with that. I've dealt with that for months now. So that's all I have right now.
Okay.
Bill, I'm going to bring something up on public safety. So I'm looking at it, taxes on that property right now are six hundred and ninety-eight dollars a year.
Per acre?
That we receive for that, that section where they want to build. So we'll always get that six hundred and ninety-eight dollars. That's correct.
On twenty, twenty-five acres.
That's the taxes, so we don't have to pay all that. So if nothing happens with the property, it's a dip. So no matter what they build on that property, my budget, the fire department's never going to see this money into their thing. I guess my thought is, in twenty years, I'm not going to get anything for it. Does the town benefit from the RDC by at least getting something on this property?
A hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year.
So if that can actually turn around, and it could support possibly a town center, a town community, a town hall, if the fire department needed a new ambulance, they could probably come to RDC. So there are benefits.
If the school needed a bus, right now, as agriculture or vacant land, however it's taxed currently, whatever the school gets, they will continue to get.
Sure.
The RDC could buy the school a bus.
So I just understand that for the next twenty years, my budget won't, won't be able to utilize any tax dollars on this. However, the RDC will receive monies that can be utilized back for the community.
Yes.
Chief.
Go ahead, Chief.
So will there be a process for us to ask for those funds through the RDC?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And that's one of the allowed purposes.
Yeah, we kind of had a little communication beforehand, and that, I mean, I get it. It was made a TIF district before any of you got on this thing.
Well, and, and I will share, four days ago, when I talked to Dr. Landry, and I, I said, okay, right now, what you get is what you get. And that's not being taken away. But four years from now, you have the opportunity to go to the redevelopment commission. And, you know, I'm a former school board member. There's nobody that can sing rah rah more for the schools than me, other than maybe Dr. Landry and a couple others within the school. I can't outdo Dr. Fessler, but I told her, four years from now, have a seat at the table, come to those meetings. At least there's an opportunity, four years from now, that won't be there without this project.
That process already can be set up before you start receiving those funds?
I think it should be, absolutely.
And then if I'm correct, at the end of that TIF time period, and the actual tax dollars from that community actually does come back to public safety.
Goes to every taxing authority that would otherwise receive it, yes.
Thank you.
That's all, is that breaker?
Mr. Warnamont, you noticed you were curious of my opinion, but you didn't ask Clint. He hasn't said anything tonight. Are you curious on his opinion?
Oh, he said a few things.
Is it my turn yet?
I was, I was worried no one wanted, asked for yours, so.
Well, I had kind of a timeline on this, this deal here. And, and you know, the planning commission had their meeting. And they confirmed that, you know, the apartments were okay to be built in that zoning district. And then the first I heard about the TIF thing was, like, February twenty-eighth, I got an email about it from Buzz about having, having us meetings and stuff about it. And, you know, about them getting the stipend from us. And then at the last meeting, Buzz made a presentation on behalf of the developer. And we had no discussion on that presentation at the meeting level because there wasn't a forum here to take a vote. And then voila, this ordinance appears in my email Tuesday, without us ever having a discussion about it at the meeting level. So my first reaction was, who authorized our lawyer to present this ordinance to us? This is exactly what everybody in this group bitched about the old regime. I don't want to do, I don't, I might favor this at all. And to leave the amount open-ended and the timeline open-ended always comes back to haunt us. We have not paid other developers a stipend. And the reason we established the TIF district was for us to, uh, use the money for roads, land acquisition, infrastructure, and things that are allowed under the TIF. This TIF district out there is two hundred and sixty acres. That leaves the door open for every developer to come in and ask for the same thing with precedent. This is an apartment project. People, not a desirable development for me. And anybody I asked in my poll, which I took, was against it. And how can you do a believable projection when my property tax assessment went up twenty percent this year alone? An example of that is the sewer plant projection of twenty to twenty-five homes a year, which was killed in one year. And this project has no correlation with what was done with the Wellness Center. They agreed to pay taxes when they didn't have to. So I don't, anybody that says this has any correlation with the Wellness Center, I beg to differ with you. And also, I want to see where their five hundred and sixty-four parking places are going to be.
Thanks, Clint.
And also, the assessment is twice as much as that at Washington Village, which is the same-sized project.
And you get what you pay for.
Well, they won't tell, they won't be looking inside. They don't go inside, so, uh, I'm just telling you it's the same size, two hundred and eighty-eight at Washington Village, and their assessment is half of this.
I'm surprised it's that much, Clint.
I'm done.
Oh, thank you. Angie?
I'm freezing. Sorry. I'm not going anywhere. I did crank it down because blood pressures tend to escalate at public meetings at times. So I just wanted everyone to be comfortable. I'm sorry.
Chris, if any, chime in, anything you'd like to add, please do.
I mean, I've asked enough questions. I feel like I have what I have moving forward.
Okay. Is there any other discussion, any other comments? I'm going to make a motion, because I'll, I'll be the bad guy. Everybody can point the finger straight at me. I'm going to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number zero-five-zero-four-two-two-A. And this is a resolution authorizing the further consideration of the proposed economic development revenue financing for this project.
Second that?
I, I'm fearful to ask if there's any conversation, because we kind of went out of order. So I think we've had a lot of conversation and appreciate every bit of it. You know, we do not have, whether it's the five of us, whether it's everybody in the room, we don't have to agree on everything, and that's okay. That is absolutely okay. But I will say, before we take a vote, that there are no backdoor agreements or behind-the-door deals. There's been nothing underhanded about this project. You know, I was accused of being in collusion with the developer because I went and visited their property. I was offered the opportunity to fly to another state to view one of their projects. And after being accused of driving to Castleton to look at their, paid for, well, I didn't. I took my life in my hands because Angie drove. But, you know, heaven forbid that, you know, people want to dig and look and think there's something underhanded here. I'll tell you, dig as much as you want. Because I will not ever, not once, not this project, not any, sell my integrity, my reputation, you know, and there's a lot of people in this building, historically, not currently, that can't say that. Every decision they made was how do they steal money? How do they pocket money? How do they personally gain from the decisions that they're making? And you have a different town council. You might not agree with what we do. But I want to tell you, me personally, and I think I speak for everybody here, every decision we make is because we think it's the best interest of the town, period. That's what I signed up for. No more, no less. So with that, um, we had the motion, we had the second. There is no further discussion unless anybody wants to say anything else. Because I don't want to, I'm not trying to stymie anybody else from saying anything that they want to say. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. And I abstain.
So Ted, in a two-two tie, in a normal situation, we would turn to the elected clerk treasurer for the tiebreaker.
Correct.
She's not here.
She is not here. Will Yvonne be here for the next meeting? Okay. Well, then I would request that the matter be put on the agenda for the next meeting. We'll take another vote at that time. And if necessary, then at least we have the tiebreaking, whether it's for or against, at least we have an answer, and we can tell the developer whether we're moving forward or not.
Does her, does her vote have to come during a meeting, Ted?
Yes, it does. Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we can't take any action outside of meeting. So. And I asked whether she, if she was, happened to be in Florida on vacation. Our rules for video participation are, if you can be seen and you can be heard, that's counted as being present. But, so if she was in Florida, I would have tried getting her my FaceTime or Zoom or something. But she's in the Netherlands.
No, no, she's not in the Netherlands.
No? Who is it? Where's she at?
Grand Cayman.
Okay. I, I wouldn't bother-
It's a real vacation, not a family thing.
We will have another vote at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, so where are we on our agenda? Let's move on to department reports. Bob?
I've got it.
Jim? You don't have to have a lot.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm good. Yeah, thank you.
See? You can have a lot. Suzie?
Wow.
Kitty?
We have an in-person audit. It's been moved to June twenty-seventh.
Okay. Uh, now we'll open the floor for any other public comments. If there's anybody that'd like that this time to have any input that you haven't had previously, now's the time.
I have one, Bill.
Sure.
Did you see one? Um, in your minutes, about April sixth.
Mm-hmm. We know we are, Dale. And Dale, let me make the same, would you like to see this timetable?
Sure.
I have one for both you and Chris, and anyone else. I have a couple extra.
Um, and then the minutes, April sixth, it says, "Recommendation from the planning commission of annexation of Willow Ridge." Actually, the planning commission did not make a recommendation of annexation. It made a recommendation on zoning.
Correct.
So that should be changed for future plans.
That's absolutely, yeah. They do not have a vote on annexation. It was just the zoning upon annexation.
That was April sixth, one point one.
Okay.
I'm going to pull that. Suzie, did you get that?
Yeah.
And thank you very much, because that's absolutely correct. Anyone else? Council comments. Clint, you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, yes, I do. Uh, this is addressed to Ted. Ted, I was looking at the, uh, uh, rules for the RDC. And I see that we are out of compliance. Uh, the members need to be appointed or elected every year, free by the town executive, tuned by the rest of the council. And their appointment is just for one year. And then also, in another part of the chapter, it says that nobody can be on the RDC that has an interest in the property. Now, I don't know, this is a legal thing. I'd have to go back and do the, all that rigmarole they do, to go back and check everything. But I don't know if that means this allocation area or the whole TIF district. In my opinion, it was the whole TIF district, but that's, that's, I'm not going to make that decision. And that would be, that was all I got to say.
Okay. We will look into how the RDC is composed and we'll make sure that. I know the, the planning commission, um, we reconstituted it. Because I know I was, I couldn't remember who had what positions and who was appointed by who. So I know the planning commission-
I mean, it would just be a matter of appointing, you know, you making your three appointments and us confirming the other two appointments and making sure everybody that's on it can be on it.
Yeah. Okay. And I'm going to start with who's on it.
Might want to do that before our, you know, now that we're going to wait another couple weeks, might be a good idea to think about it.
Do that at the next meeting. Sure. Okay. Uh, can we add that to the agenda so that we properly reconstitute and appoint members to the redevelopment commission?
We may as well look at the EDC, too, to make sure we're compliant.
Yeah, I did look at that.
I know we did organizational meeting in January, and I thought we addressed some of it.
Well, I know we did the planning commission at that time. Because at that time, we had some issues that were coming in front of it, so.
But like, like the RDC and EDC never meet, so it's one of those, you know.
Okay. Thank you, Clint. Anything else?
That's all.
Thank you. Chris? I'd like to thank Bill Spalding for being here. Welcome. And our new township trustee or to-be, thank you for joining us. And everybody else, thank you for joining us. Randy?
Yeah, actually, I do have comments. So Chris, you may or may not be in luck. Um, and in general, it's going to take a couple minutes, so I apologize because I'm sure everyone's eager. But I think that I'm entitled to have, you know, a couple opinions myself. Um, a couple of things I want to comment on is I've been thinking about a lot of the input that we receive- input that we receive on development. Where's New Powell going? What do we want? Who do we want? We are elected to represent everyone in our community. That means the people that live paycheck to paycheck, and that means the people that have the most prolific investment portfolios you can imagine. And last year, at some point, someone approached me in the community, and they said, I want to talk to you about this development, I want to talk to you about what's going on in our, in our community, I want to talk about what you're allowing to come into our community, or considering to allow. And a very in-depth discussion ensued on houses and their value, and the kind of people that may move into those houses, and what we should or we shouldn't want in our community. And with many of those discussions, I realized, and as well as some comments made tonight, that if those values were truly universal, that the only acceptable developments and folks to move into our community in the future, those cannot afford $350,000 houses and up, what are we saying? Because in the reality, if that was the situation, I wouldn't be living in the town, I wouldn't be on your town council, and I wouldn't be involved in your community, because my family is the family that 20 years ago, you would have been keeping out, because we didn't have value here. Two masters-educated people who don't pretend they're special by any means, that are professionals, that are scouting leaders, that are volunteering in the schools, that are giving back to your community, and you're saying you don't have value, or because you can't afford a $350,000, 1,800 square foot house, there's not a place for you. And Bill, no offense, when I heard the comment earlier with Washington Village, you know, we don't want Washington Village, it's an ISO, because quote, "you get what you pay for," guess where I lived in the first year and a half of my marriage? Washington Village apartments. And I think of friends who live there that are grandparents on single-family income, or fixed incomes, or single parents trying to start over in life, or even your families who can't afford the $350,000 houses, I'm not going to argue about 25 and 35-foot setbacks for your fire department to get in there, I'm not arguing those components, I'm arguing the messaging that I hear as a councilman from folks in our community. And so I just want to clarify the sensitivity of this matter, and what we seem to project as a town council, as a community, on social media, because truly, um, it's bothersome at times. Secondly, I want to address, when we're talking about integrity, I am not going to compromise my values or my integrity to discuss or vote on an issue, no matter how much people want me to do it, for the sake of maybe getting a vote or not, or hearing an opinion in a public setting, I will not do it. And I would expect no less than anybody else on this council if there was a perceived or very real conflict of interest. And if there is a concern over that, I should be approached directly to talk about that issue. The last thing I want to say is that, um, when folks come to me in the community and ask me questions, if I know what's going on, if I see it in the newspaper before I know what's going on, or I read about it on social media before it's going on, whether it's restaurants locating in town, whether it's development proposals, whether it's, I don't know what you mean, I need to know about it before I read about it in media. And however, we can get better on that topic, um, you know, I really think, I think we do. So, um, I just want to be mindful of those issues going on, and where I stand on those issues, and I will not waver where I stand, because for that matter, um, for some people, there's never going to be an apartment that's good enough, there's never going to be a house that's good enough, there's never going to be a restaurant that's good enough, and I think we need to be mindful that we represent everyone, a paycheck-to-paycheck person, and again, those who have unlimited resources in our community, more power to all of them, but I represent all of them, and that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Angie?
I'm good.
We'll move to my favorite part of the agenda, that's consideration of the claims. This evening, we are requested to consider meeting APV numbers 23929 through 23984, wastewater and stormwater meeting APV numbers 23930 through 23981, gross payroll APVs 23953 through 23957, and payroll deduction check APV numbers 23958 through 23961. Is all as presented in your backup materials, is there a motion regarding the claims as I'll make a motion that we approve the claims as we, as presented, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Clint. Now, because we have a motion and a second, the floor is open for any questions, comments, concerns, any issues regarding any of the claims as presented in your backup materials.
I have a question from APV 23945 for Commonwealth Engineers for $22,000, $22,800. Where's the report?
It's, we don't have the report yet, but that was just, we, we agreed on it, what was it, $40,000, you know, so.
What was that?
The preliminary engineering report.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would have been on the contract.
Yeah, so that's just a payment towards it.
It, it seems like, I'm not.
It is, yeah.
But that's it, that's what Jim.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they, they are very close to, I think we'll meet them next week and talk about the dollars that they've presented, and they'll probably come back and talk with the council, maybe set it up next meeting.
But I do like to route, we're thinking on this comprehensive plan, trying to make it simpler and updated more often.
Very much, yeah, yeah.
Well, and Jim, something that I'd like to bring up real quickly, can we put on the agenda for the next meeting, eliminating the requirement for certified mail, and in its place, use a certificate of mailing? Only because a certificate of mailing might cost 60 cents a piece.
Yeah.
Where certified mail is $7.33 a piece.
Well, we sent out a lot of weed letters this week, grass letters, and, you know, it does cost us quite a bit. Ted, are we, can we send out letters that way, you know, for the violations?
Well, you could, you could do those by regular mail, there's, well, there's no requirement.
There's no requirement, they just come, they can just come back and say they didn't get it, with certified mail, you get the return receipt, which.
If they sign.
Is Exhibit A. We get a lot of them back, they don't, certified mail, they don't, they don't even open, so. Right.
So just something that maybe.
Yeah, I'll put it on the agenda, we'll, yeah.
Angie, any other claim questions?
No.
Anyone else, issues with any claims? All those in favor of approving the claims as presented, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and the claims are approved. Does anybody want to make a motion that we adjourn?
To adjourn.
Second, all those in favor of adjourning, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.